It is now six thirty. I'd like to call this work session meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Counselperson Costner.
Here.
Councilman Nestor.
Present.
Counselperson Thomas.
Here.
Councilman Chakowski.
Here.
Mayor Mosher.
Present.
Mayor, I note five present and a quorum.
Thank you. This time I'd like to ask Bishop Mast to lead us in prayer.
Almighty God, ruler of heaven and earth, you're awesome and you're great. God, you're omnipotent and you know more than we could ever know, but we lean on you for guidance. We ask you now, God, that you would bless these city officials. You would bless all the participants that are here today that we remember that, God, you're still in charge and that we remember that we're workers together, that we're all trying to get to the same destination for the city and that, God, we recognize we're stronger when we work together. Can you help us to keep in mind that we are different minds? We have different opinions and so everything that we think come to our mind may not be what other people think. So help us with grace and mercy, God. Consider our brother and our sister. We thank you for how you woke us up this morning. We thank you for the start of a brand new year. And we ask you now, God, that you would keep us and let this meeting be peaceable and let it be edifying. Let the words of our mouths and the meditations of our heart be acceptable in thy sight, oh Lord, our strength and our redeemer. In the name of God and his son, we thank you. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
We'll save any correspondence for the council meeting and get right on to the discussion. So we are interviewing for the position of director of the civic center. We unfortunately have not completed the interviews. We will continue doing the interviews next week. So there's really not too much to discuss on that until which time as we get somewhere. But I would like to think that by our next council meeting, we will all be in concurrence to put somebody in that position. Discussion of the yearly service maintenance contract for 2025 for Frank Godla mechanical. Do you have that contract that we can?
I did forget.
My goodness, I just.
Right on my.
Through everything. Yes. If you have any comments on agenda items.
Yeah, because I even have a check. Sorry, Ernie.
Ernest Telegrapis. Okay, I know you're going to be looking into this maintenance agreement with Frank Godla. All I know is that he is very competent, but his prices keep going up and up and up. And if you guys will be tightening your belt, you better be looking at somebody else. Now, let's go to page two. Why is D a problem where billing is getting charged late fees? What's the problem? You holding payments back, Tony?
No, we'll discuss that.
Okay, because I was going to blame Tony since.
No, there's nothing to blame anybody on discussion. These are not motions. These are discussion items.
The other one is why do we need a sophisticated civic key pass system here?
That's also something for discussion.
What happened to the old way of like you got one guy that's responsible? He has the key.
That'll be discussed.
All right, but I want to know why would the fire department and the police department need guardian services when they are the protective service themselves?
Just the fire alarm. And it'll be discussed as well.
Okay, I thought they needed extra, you know, protection of some kind. All right, now, go on page three. Discussion of other candidates or any candidates for board members. What boards are reopened yet? I mean, I'm under the opinion all the boards are empty.
No, no, all the boards are empty.
Okay, which ones we talking about?
Well, that's what we'll discuss.
Well, see.
These are all items for discussion. They're not.
I know, but what happens is this, this is a real slide thing.
No, it's not slide.
I'll tell you what.
No motions being made. There's no, nobody appointments being made.
Okay, but if you put resolution there and you have to spell out what the resolution is, then we could talk about it, but with discussion.
That's right, and that'll happen, that'll happen on the next meeting when we have.
The next meeting, we're going to be able to talk about all these things.
It'll be motions at that time.
Okay, well, you're on tape. Okay.
That's the purpose of a work session.
Mayor, I'm just going to make a mention of something.
Yes.
Ernie's right about something and that is, what's the point of having questions by the public if they can't come back and ask follow-up questions when it's after it's being discussed? That proves nothing.
The point of a work session is to have open discussion on the items that will be in the next meeting. The next meeting, they are fully authorized and able to make any comments they want to make. There is no, there's no combining this, things that we're going to talk about here. And this is something I want to make sure everybody understands. If you have something that wants to be considered by council, submit it to us. We will put it on a work session agenda. We will discuss it. And if it's worthy, we may or may not include it in the. You don't chime in on discussion items. This is discussion for us. The reason we can't get together, this is something that has been complained about by, by people in the audience many times before, that we never get together and able to discuss anything before the meeting. This is our opportunity to discuss these things before we go to a council meeting. Most work sessions in the other place, they don't even allow any comments at all, but at least we allow comments on agenda items. The reason we do that is there are some agenda items that we're voting on. Those happen to be all, they will all be bill pays. So those are really the only questions you would be able to ask on, that make any sense to me. No, that's not a motion. When it becomes a, a bill, it'll be on the bill pay. And later on this evening, Tony will go through and pay all the bills that are due at this time as he's going through the sign.
I, I just, there's no reason we can't have the work session. But I think if people want to ask questions and they ask them before the meeting, when the meeting starts for agenda items, they should be able to follow up and be able to say something as a discussion after council has talked about it. Because what's the use of getting their input then? Because you're not getting their input.
No, we are getting their input. When it becomes a motion, we ask for input.
But see, there it's too late.
No, it's.
I think it's too late. I feel it's too late. It's way too late. Because all the discussion, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, but all the discussion, all the going back and forth, all the things from the, from the public and all that should be dealt at the work session. The regular meeting should only be.
Then we might as well make this a regular meeting.
But they are. They're still advertised as the same thing.
They're advertised as the same thing only because we paying bills at the ti- at the time. No, it's a, it's an opportunity for us to discuss things in detail. And if we don't satisfy their curiosity through our discussion, they're free to bring it up in the next council meeting before we make a motion on it.
But, okay, I, I think the, the regular meeting should just be simple, eight motions. There's no, there's no real major discussion. Because you've already discussed about it at the work.
You have to have.
Well, you can have it if you, but if.
You have to have public comment for a voting meeting.
Well, there, I didn't say not to.
And there's, there's plenty of time for them to contact council members after this meeting and say, okay, you talked about this or that and, and to, to.
See, I would argue that this is the forum for their, to do that. I would not waste my time calling any of us during the week to talk to you about something.
Then we might as well get rid of the whole work session concept and just have council meetings.
Well, I thought this was going to be a little bit different.
It's not tricky. It's just trying to be productive. Okay, let's continue on.
I was just saying, I just said, I think what they might be saying, say for instance, we're discussing something and someone says something really good that leads, it goes to our discussion, that might change the whole manner of how we look at things. And that's where I think they're saying, they might give us something and we say, oh, we didn't think about that. And it's not going to, we're not going to vote on tonight, but when we talk about, hey, that's, that was right. That makes us change our whole way of thinking.
There's no reason why in the course of our discussion that we ask anybody we want to for advice or, or their opinion.
But we, but the public doesn't get comment after the beginning, so no, we don't.
You're not listening to what I'm saying. It's in the course of our discussing of a subject. If we feel that there's something that be needed, that we need some information from the public, there's no reason why we can't ask for that.
So what you're saying then is after every discussion, we should say, does the public have any comment or questions on this?
Only if you feel like you didn't, you're not capable of making the decision.
But I can't read their minds.
They elected you to represent them. You need to remember that.
What I think he means is we're, we all, everybody is not wise on all different things. So they might have more wisdom on certain things than I might have. And I, I think that's where it's coming from. They come from all different backgrounds and they might know more about a topic than I actually know. And that's where I think they're saying sometimes the input, I understand what you're saying, but sometimes hearing your input might help us make a decision.
And what I'm saying is if you feel like you need the input, ask for it. Okay, let's get back to what we were talking about here. The discussion of the interview process. Anybody have any concerns about that? I mean, we're going to have a meeting next Wednesday. We did receive a very powerful recommendation by Teresa Say and I think that's very important that we, we consider that as well. The discussion on the maintenance contract for Frank Godla, that agreement's here. Basically what he's saying is for eighteen hundred dollars, he will take care of all the inspections, all the filters, all the, the things that need to be inspected and changed throughout the year for the city garage, the fire, police and fire department, the civic center and city hall for a flat fee of eighteen hundred dollars. And I think in the past, we spent considerably more than that. I think this is really a cost-saving thing for us to do myself.
Well, if you're going to do something like that, my question's going to come back and say, if this is for, for checking or doing filters, why aren't our, why aren't our streets crew?
Yeah, it's more, if you go up there and look at the heating and cooling system we have on top of this building, that first off, there's twenty-four air filters on it. And that, that is not something that, that just anybody would go up and mess with. It's much more than just simply changing air filters.
Well, if you're looking at something like this then, then we should put an RFP out. We put an RFP out for this.
We could, or eighteen hundred dollars is within the threshold and I'm convinced that that's going to be the best price we're going to give, but we can do that. I don't have.
I'm convinced that we put an RFP out for it. That way, anybody that has the opportunity that wants to do something like this.
We can advertise for it.
It doesn't even need to be a former or a, a formal RFP. You can even find other HVAC companies around the area and get quotes. I mean, that's where they all have.
I mean.
I don't have a problem with that.
The other, the other thing I would say before I'll, myself, I would ever even consider getting some type of thing like this is, do we have an actually list of facilities and what is entitled to each one that needs inspected and what needs changed? How can we actually ask somebody to turn around and do something for a set price when we don't know ourselves what to do?
That's right.
Just for example, I see like the library is not mentioned on here.
The library is not part, the library is not part of our responsibility.
Yes, it is. We own the building.
Well, then we need to add that to it.
We need to add the library till we own the property. Yeah. Yeah, we've done the roof before for them and done air conditioning for them.
Okay.
Can I comment?
Certainly.
One thing about Glenn, he knows the system like nobody else knows it. And these are, everything is old. And when you walk in these buildings, I was at the civic center today and he was pointing out all these, it would, it would be a learning curve for anybody coming in and trying to maintenance all these different pieces. He knows that library like the back of sand. He's been the only one coming in there fixing. Well, fine, but I'm just saying that he has been a good supporter of us in the past. He comes and he looks, he makes trips around just checking stuff out. And.
And he's always been the best price by far.
Is he lic- is he licensed?
Yes.
For air conditioning, vent, and heating and everything?
I believe so, yes.
Not believe so. We need to know.
Yes.
So does he have his insurance on file?
No.
We, if you want it, I can get it to you.
Well, if someone's going to do work for the city, they should have their bond or their insurance on file.
If we're going to go with him, we would, we would get that information.
He already has it on file for work he's done, but we can.
Quit interrupting. You can talk when we're asked, but quit interrupting.
So you're looking for the library to be added?
Yes, please.
Insurance?
Yes, please. Thank you. Yes.
And insurance related, anything else?
Yeah. Do we not also own Hilltop? We own the building.
Yeah.
That's the fire station too downtown.
It's a place of fire building. Do we have the annex building on there?
The annex building is rented out.
We own it.
Yeah, but we own it though.
We're responsible for anything that has to get work over there, so we, we own it. It's our building.
Okay, let's add it.
Also, what about the property across the street that we inherited?
That's not heated and cooled.
It's not?
No. There's some dehumidifiers running. That's, that's extended. What I would suggest is that we, we contact other people. We get quotes from them. We put it in the requisition system with the lowest quote and we just process this as a regular requisition. The other thing that, as long as we're talking about the requisition system.
It is, but the thing is, is I don't want, I would not want this just going into.
It's a service contract. It's going to have to be voted on by council.
Yeah, I don't want anybody not knowing and seeing the actual, all the other contract, not, not contracts, offers. Because, just because it's the lowest one, doesn't mean you're going to go with it. We don't have to do that.
Right.
So, and again, I wouldn't even move forward on this until we get a list generated that has everything of what needs to be done and everything.
Who's here qualified to do that?
Well, I'm sorry, it's not a matter of who's, wait, 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 wait. Who's not qualified? What about our fire chief? Why even, why wouldn't he be qualified?
Do you think he's qualified to go up and look at the HVAC and determine how, what filters and how many there are and so forth?
Maybe not the HVAC, but some of the other stuff.
That's all we're talking about is HVAC here. Heating, ventilating and air conditioning and plumbing.
But in the past, we, there's been roofing involved and everything else.
That's not what, that's not what this is. This has nothing to do with roofing. This isn't, this isn't a great, a retainer to perform in a very, very spirit, it clarifies that.
Air furnaces, air conditioners, steam boilers, hot water boilers, inspection, cleaning and testing controls, replacing filters, lubrication, gauge testing and freon.
Cleaning the condenser coils.
Cleaning.
And general inspection of the system.
Well, I still still think there should be a, some type of bullet or checklist from, for every one of these locations that says what he's going to do so we don't know what's being, being done.
Well, I'm just saying that it would require a skilled person to do that. He is one of those skilled persons. We can have him put that together before we give him a contract, but he'll charge us for that.
Well, if we get somebody else, they're going to want to do the same thing.
Exactly.
To evaluate it.
Well, somebody else would have to come and, and do their own evaluation because they're not going to take anybody else's unless they are familiar with that particular piece of equipment.
No, what he means is that if we're getting different people, they have to be putting in or whatnot or be for the same items that are, that God is.
And they would have to come here and learn the systems is what I'm saying because there are very unique systems.
I don't think there's a learn of a system. I think it's just a matter of they, you come in here, they do an inspection of diligence of what's the heating and air conditioning or plumbing in this building. It's no different than you call Galis or the guy from somewhere else over Charleroy if your furnace goes.
All I'm saying is that if it was a nice day, we'd go up on the roof and I would show you what I'm talking about. And I don't know what I'm looking at, but I do know that it's far more than just putting together a list of equipment.
Well, like the old scenario is you don't call a plumber to do a electrical job. So I'm sure the people that are qualified, that are going to bid or put a, looking for something like this are capable of doing that.
I don't have a problem contacting other people and seeing what they would take to, to do, to put together a quote. But I don't know how we would ever put together a checklist that, of things to do.
Basically, I think it's just going to be this, what you got right here. You start right here with the service includes. If you say this is what the, what, what we're looking to have covered in your agreement.
But for you, but the problem is, is all the equipment's different. It's different here than it is.
They're going to look at that.
Right, they're going to have to come look at it.
And all the buildings that you have, they'll look at that, but this is what you want covered.
Okay. That's right.
Right, and it's no different than, you don't change these filters once a year.
You change them twice a year.
Or maybe every three or four months you do it.
Or every three or four months, yes.
Is that part of this? It doesn't spell it out.
He will inspect them and clean them as required is what he says. Replace them as required. And we don't have to have a, an agreement in any case. We can just simply call somebody to come up and, and replace the filters and do all this stuff on a case-by-case basis too. I just think he was giving us a special price by doing it this way.
I am not in favor of it this way.
Don't we get some competitive numbers for you?
I mean, that's just my opinion. I.
No, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, I don't know, Karen, how do you, what do you, how you feel?
That's a good point. I think what Lois said though is you would bullet these items here and that would be for every building and every, because some of these buildings might have more than one furnace. The library has two air conditioners on the roof, so for each unit, I think you just have this and they do a little checkup.
If anybody gives us a price, they're going to have to come and see what kind it is and how many filters there are and everything.
They're going to come anyways.
It's a job.
It's a job. There's a big investment just in, in trying to see what is, is here.
And they may not want to do it.
Okay, so this will not be on the agenda, but it will be something that we will continue to work on. Okay?
So do you want people to submit some names to you or no?
You can, but I was just going to get on a phone book and get ahold of HVAC professionals. Sure. Frank Godla.
He did?
He knows it. That's right. Well, let's move on. We can beat that to death. Be here all night. A discussion on the Guardian system for installation and implementation of the fire alarm system at the City of Madison Police Station, Fire Station One. The only issue that we got back, we got several different quotes in the past. Do you know what kind of numbers we had?
Well, basically, you had ADT, Comcast and Guardian make proposals.
Okay.
We looked at the proposals and that included the chief, fire chief Heppel and others. And ADT had a similar five-year contracting period, but they were a bit more expensive than Guardian. Now, I wasn't expecting to have all these numbers this evening because we were talking about a personal service contract with Guardian as we felt it was the best. And a PO had already been entered and agreed to, so, but I can revive these if that's the case too.
Well, just so everybody understands.
Can I jump in?
Please do.
Take a look at the Guardian contract. It's an initial five-year term. In the agreement itself, it's for automatic renewals for an additional five-year term. But, hold on. I was emailing with Richard Thomas from Guardian today. The renewal periods can be reduced to one year.
Okay.
I did ask a follow-up question. Well, can we reduce the initial term? Is that okay if the city would do that? He has not gotten back to me.
When this PO went in.
We had no idea. It wasn't until he said, we have to, they refused the PO until we checked on, on their box. And when it checked on the box, it said, hey, there's a contract behind this. I sent it to Joe. And that's when we found out, hey, there's a five-year term to this. I had no idea when we were.
Okay, because my problem with this is when I originally approved this, I approved this because I was told it was a, first it was a repair, then it was an upgrade because the old fire stuff, it won't work anymore or is not serviceable. And then now I just hear that there's a contract tied to this if we do it.
And I was surprised too.
Yeah, the contract's not for the installation of the services.
No, the contract is additional.
It's the security and fire monitoring.
Right. So.
I mean, that's going to be any thing you have.
Is that an RFP?
Based on the amounts, it's a professional service. You did put out some kind of proposal because you got three back from Comcast, ADT and Guardian.
Council didn't put, do an RFP for that?
Well, it's not an RFP. It's quotes that were obtained.
Where, where, what facilitated the quotes?
The need.
Not, well, wait a minute.
You, you don't like the quoting process is what you're telling me now.
No, what I don't know, what say is this has grown from an eight thousand dollars, need to fix the fire stuff that's in there to, oh, that they have, when I add a contract on to it, to, oh, there's two other bids in here that I, this is the first time I'm saying this.
I thought it was just going to be a fix.
I thought it was just a fix. That's all it was. And I mentioned to you guys, I thought this was a expensive fix and then I was told no because the system doesn't, isn't serviceable any longer. And I said, oh, okay, we need to do this then. Now, this changes the whole parameter, especially adding two other people for quotes that.
Right, so let's talk about the other quotes. The other quotes required that they go in and rewire the entire building. This Guardian is saying, we've got the wires in the building, we've got the sensors in the building, the controller needs to be upgraded to be serviceable. That's what the eight thousand dollars was about, was to upgrade the controller. Anybody else is going to want to rewire the building, which is going to be much more expensive. And that's what we got back was much more expensive quotes.
But you're missing my point. My point is council didn't know anything about the other quotes. That's what I'm trying to get across to you.
All we're trying to be is proactive and get additional quotes and make sure that we're providing the best information as a council.
This is something that has grown to something small now within his. This is something that has grown to something small now within his massively got bigger.
There's no motion to move. There's no votes.
There's no vote.
You have the other information available that everybody can take a look at.
Yeah, we have to dig it up. Tonight because we were dealing with the particular contract here to move ahead.
We can dig it, we can dig it up and we can get additional ones if you want. The bottom line, it needs to, we need to get this controller fixed, one way or the other, fixed or replaced.
But that's what we thought the eight thousand dollars was.
And it does, it does. It's just that there's, but there's also, it also requires, and this is, I think, the, uh. The fire marshal requires that, that this system's being inspected periodically. So there's an annual inspection that's included in that.
Sixty-four hundred dollars a year? That's the contract? Is that what this price is here?
Monthly service.
Monthly service is sixty-five dollars or a total purchase of sixty-four forty? So what is this?
That's not what I saw. It was a, the initial, it was eight thousand dollars for the equipment, the installation of the equipment.
Yeah, that, that's there, but this is also on top of it, isn't it?
There's, there's a maintenance fee.
That is not the information that was sent over from Guardian.
The contract didn't say that.
No, it's clearly there.
That's what they, Joe, that's what you have.
No.
In the packet.
Yeah, but what I, what Guardian sent to the mayor.
Yeah, here it is. This is a one twenty-seven forty-five.
It comes to sixty-four forty. But that's on top of the eight thousand. I don't know if that's on top of the eight thousand or why was it, why is the eight thousand here and it's different?
Yeah, so what I saw today has eight thousand and forty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. That's the total purchase price. It includes all the equipment that is necessary.
You all have the same package.
Here it is, right here. Exhibit A is eight thousand, forty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents.
That's what the fair purchase order is.
That was the purchase order. But what's the sixty-four hundred dollars for?
Where'd you get sixty-four hundred dollars?
It's on the end of the, go, go all the way to page seven.
I got page six. I don't have a page seven.
There you go.
Yeah, I mean, what I saw today is definitely in the packets. I think the contract's on top and then you go to the, it looks like the proposal.
And if you go to page six, Mayor, it breaks down the.
That's dated August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
This is four pages than I've ever seen before.
This is the proposal that must've came in back in last August.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, it is, but that's on top of the eight thousand.
No, 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 no.
So you're saying that it's, it's gone up?
It's gone up.
Yes.
That's was to show that, that we waited, pricing goes up, so.
Joe showed us. That's from in August.
Are we talking the same thing?
Now, there's two different Guardian proposals.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Civic center. So be careful if you're.
Okay, so the six thousand, the six thousand dollar one is for the civic center.
Civic center, yeah.
We're not even talking about that right now.
And if he put a page in that showed that the pricing went up.
No, no.
I think it's the civic center.
It's the civic center.
Yeah, absolutely.
There are two separates here.
Yeah.
And they're broken up.
We can probably, most likely, call them up and say, we don't wanna have anything other than the monitoring service. I think, uh. I don't know if this is by law or by order that, but fire alarms have to be tested.
I, I think it's once a year, sir. It looks like from the contract that they took the price that it costs to test. And spread it out over the course of twelve months instead of a one-time payment.
That's what I weigh on to be.
Yeah, the annual test for inspection services, and I don't know if you had this system tested by Guardian. He's saying it's eight hundred and seventy dollars a year.
Right, and they do come by here every year and they charge us eight hundred and some dollars to test it.
So part of the quote for the entire one hundred and twenty-seven forty-five for the police station.
Includes that.
Is fifty-four ninety-five, that's the monitoring, and seventy-two fifty for the, the annual testing.
I know they came by this year and tested the alarms here. And I'm sure they charged us. I have no idea what it was. Somewhere in that neighborhood though.
My head hurts. It's gonna be a long night.
The whole question is, do we wanna move this forward as a motion for the, the meeting that's two weeks?
I would say no. We don't, we need more information. Do we need, do we need a RFP? This, this is confusing all over the place.
Well, there's several different quotes that he included in this handout here. One for the, the civic center. Also one for the, uh, the.
I think your civic center, I think your civic center's supposed to be under item E in the discussion.
Right.
I think, I think we missed the separation page in the package.
If he did not include a price, pass price, then I misspoke there.
No, the, the price, the price that meets.
Right.
What the purchase order was, is the price that's set forth in the service agreement.
So what additional information would you guys want for next meeting? Would you want the other bids? I'm open to putting together anything.
At this point, I just want the system repaired. This is all over the place.
How is it all over the place, Tom, or Councilman? I, I don't, we have a price and we have a, the price of a monthly. And we looked at the others. We can compare and contrast those, but they were.
But the other ones were never on the radar.
We did three because you generally ask for three and we found the lowest pricing.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about, this went from putting in something that needed to get repaired. To something that can't get repaired to get, uh, upgraded. Am I correct? And now it's gone to a full-blown service. And now it's also the civic center, which is on.
No, 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 civic center's a separate subject. We're not even talking about that.
But it's still under the same company.
It may be, but it's not on the same discussion item. We got that later on. We're gonna discuss the civic center.
We'll be discussing that at ten o'clock tonight.
Okay.
Mayor, can I add something?
Certainly.
Just for the knowledge of council, we've been out without a fire, uh, alarm system for a long time. We also, we house prisoners. We have secure documents. The building's a two million dollar building or so. There's equipment, exportative fire department that's, you know. Fire department's burned out. Police department's burned out. I just wanna let you know that we've been without some and the liability alone, if we would have a prisoner in back air. And by any strange chance that a fire would break out and no one's the wiser, that, that, this town's gone.
Chief, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Did you and Chief Heppel look at all these proposals for your building?
We were part of it. Uh, Chief Heppel was present. Uh, he's the one that supplied the vendors with the blueprints. Of the building itself.
This is done half-assed.
Yep.
Big time. This should've been, it should've been, Chief, that you came to the mayor or council and said, hey. This isn't working. Can someone look at this?
He did, and that's the reason why we proceeded with all the stuff.
No, no.
You said the mayor or council. He did that with the mayor. He did that.
But there's all, there's proposals already made.
That's right.
Proposals before council even knew anything about it. Counsel should know about it before you, anybody goes out and gets proposals.
And you did.
No, that's not for you to decide. That's for the person that you're call, you're calling up to get a, to get a quote from.
That's what we did.
Okay, I can't be responsible for what happened years before when this was first done.
But now we have an opportunity.
To fix it.
I'm not saying right now, but we need it fixed. It, it's a liability issue. I, I don't care if we got ABC Alarm Company to come down there. I just wanna look at for the better part of. The department, the, the residents, this town, period. And that's where we got, we met with. Three different individuals, three different vendors. I don't know what the other, I, I don't have those other quotes. I have Guardian. Uh, I believe Mike was, uh, has the other ones and.
But my, you're missing my point. My point is, the point, what you just said about you met with Guardian and the other ones, all right?
Yeah.
Before that even happened, council should've been brought into it and said, this is gonna happen.
You were by a past member, Councilman. Gregor brought it up to council.
Gregor, Gregor slammed his fist down many times for two years. We gotta get this fixed.
We got the three proposals.
The mayor was advised, we, uh, the mayor was part of it. He was actually, I believe, was there.
Council was aware of us moving on this. It wasn't on.
I think we should just go ahead and go on with it.
It needs done. That's not the issue.
Go on and go with it.
Yeah, I think so too.
Move it on.
Okay.
I'm putting my foot down. We're going on.
That'll be on for a motion. Okay. The, um, payment of utilities, and this is just kind of bizarre. It's hard to understand. But we're constantly getting hit with late fees because, not because we did anything wrong. It's just because we passed performance and so forth. There were times when, when certain, and it's not all the same. There's certain electric bills that have thirty days or certain electric bills that have fifteen days. It all has to do with, with how they were paid in the past. Before we were even part of it. We have improved things, but even if a thirty-day term. Even with thirty-day term, it's possible that we get into a pickle. As an example.
Sorry.
Utility sends out a, a bill from their, their central office. They send it out on, say, a Tuesday. And it takes three days to get here just because they gotta process it through their mailroom and gotta get through the mail. And it gets here three days later. It comes out on a Friday afternoon, late in, late in the day. By that time, we've already had our closeout for bills to go on next week's agenda. So we, we're, we doesn't go on next week's agenda, it goes on agenda two weeks from that point. So now we're three weeks down. And by the time we, we get, get it done on the Friday after the council meeting. And it goes in the mail on a Saturday, because that's as fast as they can move it around here, it's still another week, three or four days before it gets there. It's delayed again, even with a thirty-day process. All I'm saying is, we have utilities that are contractually obligated to, to do. We gotta keep lights on in the city. We gotta keep lights on in the office here. Those bills need to be paid when they're due. Not, not waiting until which time is, is, is council meeting happens to roll around. Now, when council meeting rolls around, we need to make sure that that is included on the list of bills that we approve, that we go through and the approval. Just the same. And we don't need to be paying them early either. That's not what I'm advocating. They need to be paid when they're due. And that is the way, that is the way that I understand most cities operate. These are not special purchases. These are utilities. These are contractually obligated to. We have Comcast, we have gas, we have electricity. Those are the three that I know of. There may be something.
Water, sewage.
Water and sewer. Don't forget those. So those are the things that need to be paid when they're due. Right, and you pay them when they're due.
That's the, my question is, are we able to talk to these providers to get these billings to kinda line up to when we have meetings?
We've tried that with electric company.
They weren't on the boat, no.
No, we got forty-four accounts with electric company. Forty-four accounts.
So if that's the case, then why can't we do, uh, electronic transfer and pay them like all of us do at home?
The problem with that is that my third-class city code requires two signatures. Even the checks that, that get done when their bills are due are gonna require two signatures.
So what you're saying is if five sets of bills come in at five different times during the month. You think Rosalie and I are gonna run down here five different times and sign checks?
Hopefully, they will be coordinated in such a way, but.
Ain't happening.
You've gotta invest in this city too, just like everybody else too.
I invest in the city. I'm here.
How do you think bills get paid, Tom?
They can be paid electronically.
They cannot be paid electronically.
Gonna have to, you two are gonna have to sign off on it.
By an email?
Something we can look into.
If you do it by email, I can hear all the time. I can sign for one of you, but not both of you.
Don't. You could also utilize the, the, the PO system too. You have that in place for a reason.
But the PO system don't get, the POs don't get paid until the, the council meeting either. They're just like anything else.
There's gotta be a simple way around this. There has to be.
As long as the approval process is in place between you and the controller.
There has to be a simple way of doing it.
Just as an example, right now, they're having a problem at the city garage with the, one of the garage doors, openers. They will not come pay it until DC Electric is paid. Now, this has nothing to do with the utilities and I tend to not hold, I hold this one different. But this is something that's going on that you guys should be aware of. Uh, DC Electric won't be paid until the twenty-third. So we got a problem with the garage door opener. So we gotta find a different electrician to fix the garage door opener as DC Electric won't do it until they're paid. And we can't go two weeks without having the garage door working there.
Didn't we just get it fixed?
At the city garage? Not that I know of. That was at the fire station.
Yeah, that was the fire station.
So we can't call somebody else to get the gar, the door fixed?
That's what we're saying we're gonna have to do is find somebody else to fix it. Get Christ or somebody else that we've done business with before to come and fix it. But that's not the, what I was talking about right now. That's just a deviation. I shouldn't have brought that up, other than you guys need to be aware of it.
So let me ask you this. If, and this is to Joe. If the city was to have a credit card that's linked. To the general fund or a sub-count for utilities, if we had to make utilities and all that.
You have that argument.
And there was a, why can't those bills?
You have that already.
We have that, so we also have a procedure that we don't use unless there's two, you and Rosalie approve it.
So they call us, that's simple, done. That's happened before.
That's fine, and that, that's what you wanna do, but that accomplishes the same thing I'm trying to get accomplished. We gotta be able to pay these bills when they're due, as opposed to wait until there's a council meeting.
Well, the difference of, I'm trying to understand this, is the difference is, is putting them on a credit card and just so, Joy is sending me an email or something that says, yes, go ahead, put it on the credit card versus someone coming down here and having to sign a check, they can't get down here until in the evening.
Let me say this though, you're the only municipality that pays bills twice a month, right? Two weeks apart, and you're still having late fees, it doesn't make.
It doesn't make sense to me, but I don't understand what's going on on that. How can you, how can we possibly get a late fee when almost everybody, even West Penn, when you pay at home, is thirty days? Everybody is thirty days, why do we have special arrangements where like that D E?
Because of prior performance of the city.
At the very minimum. You should have at least two weeks to pay a utility bill.
Yeah, uh well, and just like.
Very rarely do you have three weeks between meetings here.
Right.
The, the, the calendar just doesn't make sense that there's still late fees, there has to be.
So something else is happening and.
It's timing of the mail, it's timing, it's just timing.
But it still doesn't make sense.
As an example, D C Electric, you were notified this morning that Joy would like to pay that bill to not today, but it's too late to get it on the agenda, so we told her no.
Did you also see the date on that bill?
Yeah, they want a payment on C O D when they did it.
They wanted payment the same day that they did the job?
Yes, they didn't wanna extend, extend credit to us.
Then we didn't deal with them. Because the job shouldn't have got done then, if we weren't able to provide them with a payment right then and there.
Rewind the clock a bit and remember why we did that project when we did it, we had an emergency. The tree fell on the power line, ripped the whole power drop off the side of the building, we had to get something fixed. He, they were the ones that, only ones that could do it within a cou- couple week period. And they took much longer than expected, I ended up loaning the city a generator to run that garage for ten days. It was an emergency, Tony, it's not that we.
It wasn't, it was emergency, but.
When did the bill come in?
We just got, we just got it yesterday or today.
Tony, when do you look at the bills for every meeting?
I get them usually the Friday or the Monday before the meeting. So that bill, that bill, the work was done, and this is what I don't understand, the work was done in December. Okay, we got the bill now, yesterday, in January.
And he's wanting immediate payment, I disagree with that, but that's what he did.
But if he wanted immediate payment, why didn't we pay him back in December? We had the meeting on the twenty-eighth.
He didn't give us a bill then.
Well, then he can wait.
That's what I told him.
You know, these people just can't have any damn thing they want and change the rules every time.
And that's what I told Joy, it would have to wait till the twenty-third, that's what I told her. But that does not solve our problem with the garage door.
We, we accommodate and jump through hoops and go nuts for more people than we should. We're consistently having meetings on a second and fourth, and that's how, I know for a fact that we talked about this a year, when we came on, this council came on, the discussion was, by the way, this is when we pay our bills, and please get ahold of our customers who we gotta owe our bills to know, we paid this month, time of the month, we paid this time of the month, that's what we do.
And we've pretty much done that ever since.
Well, apparently it doesn't seem like it's working then.
It doesn't seem like it's working, is the whole reason why we're talking about it, that we're ending up still with past due bills and people that refuse to do work until they get paid.
That's my philosophy.
Well, we can try.
I mean.
I would like to suggest though that you and Rosalie get together and come up with a system that when something needs to be done, the two of you can concur and say, we're gonna pay this bill now.
I don't have a problem with that, I would say then if that's the case, those electric, the utilities that have to get paid until we can get this straightened out, can go on a credit card. And you either buy an email, or Joy has called me on the phone asking me, is it okay for me to put this on a credit card? And I said, yes. One of the two, she could document it, I don't care, but that takes care of it then.
That, and that takes care of it, we're done.
And we can do that.
That's all we, all I ask.
I, I need to know what type of card it is to be able to.
It's a MasterCard.
Master, Visa or MasterCard.
Yeah, we gotta talk about that.
It's credit.
It knows debit.
It's both.
You can do credit up to, but it's credit debit.
Right.
It comes out of your account as soon as you use it, it's not, there's no financing.
Can we, can we, can you at least identify the, the specific bills that you're having issues with?
Well, it'd be the next time that we fit a bill, I don't.
I wanna see examples of, okay.
I know that you, you've complained that you, that how are we paying this bill and it's already passed due before, and that's what I was trying to address.
Is there anything that happened recently? I mean, other than.
I haven't seen or Joy hasn't said anything to me about us being pat, late on anything, cuz I have harped on her to make sure that doesn't happen.
So it would be a bill that came in yesterday that isn't gonna be able to be paid or due before.
It didn't make the list.
Right.
But that was a bill that had no terms on it at all, that was a C O D bill.
But, that, it, you guys wanna go and pay things on credit cards and everything like that, and if it's absolutely necessary, I understand, but you brought an example of one bill, we're trying to create new rules and procedures that it may not be necessary.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, she hasn't said anything to me in months.
I think that's true, yeah.
I think this is a mountain out of a molehill that isn't there.
I'm not trying to make any mountain.
I didn't say you, I just said I think, it's on the agenda, it's on here for discussion, so I'm gonna say I think it's a mountain over a molehill and it's not as big a thing as we think.
There's no motion, there's no motion.
Okay.
If there's something that needs to be done, it can be done through the debit card, through the current procedures. They also, at the request of Karen and Mike and so forth, have obtained some uh quotes on various ideas for a keypad system at the civic center. The concept of this was that the, the bill, all the scheduling is done here by Amy in the Treasury Department. When they pay the bill, she should be able to go over to a computer and enter in a PIN code. Now, that PIN code allows them to get into the building at whatever time that they scheduled to do things. My personal feeling is that if we get a director or manager or whatever of the civic center, we have him there to open and close the door and have an even better security. That's just my feeling. Do you have anything you wanna offer, Karen, or?
So you're saying, if, once we hire somebody and they're gonna be there to open and close the building, will we still have the keypad to be able to give a code? Cuz that's like, do we need that?
Yeah, I'm saying we wouldn't, if we have a person there, he has a key, and we don't need a keypad.
No. And we got rid of that system where you kept the little key outside, and so that's been a non-issue for months now, it seems like it's worked.
It has.
It has worked, so I'm not in favor of paying more money for something if we don't need it.
And we're trying to get a, a manager, so let's just drop that.
Okay.
And this also leads me to the next question of the wifi, who, who wants to use the wifi in the civic center? And why is it not work, why is it not working now?
Teresa's saying indicates that her office formerly had it through S B H S. But now that they've left and they don't have operations there, she does not, she was wondering, do we have the wifi in, that's what we're trying to find out.
There, there is Comcast wifi there.
Could we extend her into that as a tenant in the facility, and what we have is the question.
We could, but if we're gonna do wifi at the civic center, I would suggest we go down and spend a hundred bucks at, at Walmart or Amazon, and we buy a mesh system that covers the entire building and just done with it. But that's just my suggestion, if, for a solution for wifi, I'm not convinced that there's a need for wifi. In that office, she should have been able to get access to the wifi that's on the Comcast, just on the other side of the hall.
She said she was unable to with our passcode that we utilize here in other buildings.
I know that the uh, the people counter that's on the hallway, it uses the wifi and we're gonna report back to us. So it works as far as, as the, as a hallway for sure, right next to her office.
Who's in charge of the router down there? Like what company, I'm sorry.
Comcast, it's part of the Comcast service we get.
So you're telling me the password's the same here as it is there?
No, 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 it's different.
I just had her try that, but she, she was unable to, to get in.
Well, okay.
I figured it out at one time cuz I configured the people counter to work with it.
I mean, this, I, I think we should just table this because as far as I'm thinking even for, even a discussion of the wifi or anything like that, we need to fix your own bathrooms before we even worry about things like wifi.
I agree with that too. Which takes us to the floodplain issues, and this is, I'm gonna make this real quick too. This came to me from the P, from Pennsylvania, the state of Pennsylvania. They have a program that will provide flood insurance to residents. If we join this program, it greatly reduces those rates. In order to join, join that program, we have to show that the city has invested in flood prevention in the flood zone areas. And the only thing I can say is we've made all of our investment thus far in the storm sewers, and it's questionable whether that could be applied to the flood zones. So um this has no great, direct bearing on us unless we wanted to invest in it, and since we have no investment in it, I would say we drop it. The only place that we have a flood zone by the uh U S D A is, is there by Frank's garage and the boat launch. And that is old data because they dropped the, they eliminated the uh, the lock at, at Elizabeth. So I suspect that they're gonna come and redo the floodplain zone soon, soon too. So I'd say we just drop that one.
You do have a floodplain ordinance though.
We do, we do. Yeah.
Do we have to have a plan for maybe like mine subsidence?
That's something we're doing entirely different, and hopefully.
If they did for flood?
So, so, okay, let's change subjects a little bit, let's talk mine subsidence for just a second. I got a, a couple residents up on Summit, right there where Leeds comes down, that said that they have mine subsidence, and they went to the D E P and D E P shook their head, so this is not mine subsidence. I go up there and I look at it, and the only reason why I look at it is because the sidewalk and the road is caving in. Now it becomes of interest to the city, because not, I can't be, I can't take care of their houses, that's up to them to take care of. But when it starts talking about the, the sidewalk and the, the street, it becomes a part of our issue. I talked to Vitale, Vitale suggested I talk to this gentleman, I don't remember his name, do you remember his name?
I know who he is, but I, then I could picture him, but I forget his name.
I, I forget his name, but this guy was around when Parinte was around, and he, he remembers all of that. But the bottom line is, he is one of these guys that is respected by D E P. When D, he tells D E P, this is mine subsidence, they listen. He's the one that did the uh, the mo, the investigation of mine subsidence on the, the county housing building right across the street from us over here. And he had them put in special pylons in the foundation to support that building over there. And he's not saying that, that what he's doing is, he's, he, when I met with him, he showed me all these maps and diagrams, and he'll blow your mind with his knowledge on, on mine subsidence, there's no doubt about that. But what he was advocating was, after the first of the year, sometime this coming year, that we get together with Senator Ward and DeVanzo and, and anybody else that we can from the state, and get them involved with mine subsidence in the city, where they're doing a much bigger project. And it would be not costing the city anything, but rather it'd come under the, the guise of the, the state. And that's where we're at right now, I will get together with, and schedule that meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks with, with Senator Ward and DeVanzo. But that's not what we're talking about here. Let's get, let's continue on with what, with our, what we got going on here. Change order three is something that I've never heard about until yesterday or the day before. And when I heard about it, it was just a concept. But what we've always said is they need to bring change orders to us before they become done deals. So I told everybody that we need to make council aware of this change order now, and that's the reason why we're doing this. This change order is a one point seven million dollar change order. And understand what this is, this one point seven million dollar change order is the, all the lines that come across the railroad tracks and go to the river. The reason why it's called a change order is, the original phase three did not include that, that area. When we went out for bid, we got it all bid out, and we, we bid it according to material and time and everything else. And now we're saying, we wanna go on to the river because it didn't cost us as much to do what we thought it was going to do. So we have some money left over, let's finish the project. So we, we did the application for the crossing the railroad tracks, and we, we all approved that in council. And the W E C made the application for it. This is to continue that on across the river. It's interesting because most of the li, all the lines except one of them are easily extrapolated. In other words, the contract says it's gonna cost you this much for linear foot, for this size of a line, blah, blah, blah. But the one that crosses down from Parinte is unique. It goes from a round eighty-six inch line to an oblong line, to a square tube, to a, to a, a mushroom shaped line. That is not what we got quotes on, so what we did, we asked the vendor to go back and tell us what kind of material would be used and quote us the same price for material that he would quote on the normal line, is that the way to explain that? The bottom line is, U S D A has, it was questionable whether U S D would accept that. Now, if they failed to accept that, that means we have to go out for bid again and go through the process again. The reason why that's not a good thing is, it was March of twenty twenty-two that we started this project. It was a three-year project, that ends up March of this year, two more months, this project is supposed to be wound up. So we got a couple of things that were, that I wanted to talk about here. One of which is, we need to continue this, this one point seven million dollar change order, which is really just to continue using that same fifteen million dollar uh money, pool of money that we have from, from the U S D A. It still does not touch the, the, the grant money. This, this, we're, and I, I figured it out what we're, where we're at right now. I don't know where I put it, I, I thought I had it here with me, oh, here. We're, we're currently at ten point ten million three hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents that we have billed against the U, the U S D A project. And as long as we're talking about this, that project is, that interim loan that we have is a, with P N C Bank. So right now, every time we, U S D A told us right up front that they don't pay for construction, they pay for a finished project. So we, that's one of the things that delayed this project for many years. It wasn't until we took office that we got the co, the P N C Bank to agree to do an interim loan with us. So we have this interim loan that currently is sitting at ten point three million dollars. Now, I've been working with Joe and, and he's been working with the bond counsel, they've talked to P N C Bank, they're going to allow us to pay down seven and a half million dollars of that, because the fifteen million dollars is two loans, it's two seven and a half million dollar loans. So we pay that, that loan down by seven and a half million dollars. The reason why that's important is, P N C charges a six point six percent interest. The U, you, the, the, the U S D A loan is one point one two five percent. That doesn't sound like much, but it's a thousand dollars a day savings that we will make. So in the process of them doing that, they also asked P N C Bank to extend the interim loan process for another two years. And as far as I know, they are agreeable to that, they indicated that they would do that, and possibly even for three years. The U, U S D A has already said that this project has had numerous slowdowns, including the, the not only the right of ways and all that we're doing there, but COVID and so forth also slowed this project down for some period of time. The point being is, that, that we've got another couple of years to go to spend this remaining four, four million dollars. So we need to have P N C onboard, and we need to drop the, the interest rate that we're paying as much as we can, as we can. So we need to have PNC onboard and we need to drop the, the interest rate that we're paying as much as we can, as we can.
So what's the ramifications if we don't accept this change order? We don't do this?
Yeah, we, all the work we've done is a problem.
Yeah, this, you gotta remember, this project's required by a consent decree with the DEP.
About the, not following through with what needs to be done, but the change order itself.
I'll tell you this right now. Today I got word that USDA has not only approved this, but they said March with this. And I didn't know it was gonna happen that fast, but it did.
And, and I don't know if this is a hundred percent increase to the contract. I think this might be moving, because I think it's an extension of phase three C. These, these lines were always gonna be included into.
Phase three.
Phase three C, right? Instead of going back out to bid, it's the same scope of work.
And the same pool of money.
Further down the line.
And same pool of money that we can use. We happen to have the money to pull it off.
It's the same pricing that they're using the, the cement to line these pipes with. It's just adding it back on. Because there was a point, everything started basically from the top of the hill down to the river. Cause dealing with two things. The railroads, well, really one thing, the railroads. It's tough to get across the railroads to get work. Now you're there, you submitted the application so they could review what the work you're going to do. Eventually it's to line all these pipes all the way to the river. So this is work that has always been anticipated. It just was not in the original scope of phase three C. This is not an additional one point seven million dollars to the total twenty million dollar project. This is work that's always been part of that entire scope.
And we got, is part of the money that we, we've got set up to do it. The, the difference on this project and all the other projects that have had, all the other change orders is we know about it before it actually took place. And that I think is a very big positive. That's the way we want it. There's a second one. The second part of this is one that has already taken place. And this one kind of bothers me. Change order two is the replacement of the fifty-three inch, forty-one inch arch sixty inch, to a sixty inch piece of pipe that goes up by bars. This is that pipe that runs along Grand that they've been working on for so long. They made the pipe much bigger than what they, they said they were going to make it. Now, the thing that concerns me about that is they, they did that out of convenience because the pi- the pipe was cheaper. They, they had it already there. It was an opportunity to use bigger pipe. What they didn't do was any sort of hydraulic study to say, this is how much we improve, improve the hydraulic flow of this. And the reason why I say that is one of the things that really disturbs me and really bothers me to no end is the fact that engineering never put a steel grate over that covert that's on, there on.
Keep from people from coming in.
You've got a sixty inch piece of pipe, five feet in diameter, that trees can go down, that peop- kids can walk in. I know if I was a kid, I would be building my Ford, Ford in there and I'd be doing all kinds of things in that thing.
Did we approve of getting that railroad course put on there, right?
We, we, we agree. We, 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 uh, I put in a requisition and for using line usage money. Okay, so here's what actually happened. I, I got, I, I blew a fuse on this and I went back to Tony and says, we gotta put a grate on there. He goes out and he makes it a change order number one, which is not on here. Change order number one was for what? Twenty-two million? Twenty-two thousand dollars?
What's change order?
The one that put, for him to put the, for MCSP to put a grate on.
Yeah, it was something like that.
It was something that were twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars. I said, that's ridiculous for a steel grate to put over the front of this thing. So he went out for bids and he came back with numbers like fifteen thousand, eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand. I thought, this is crazy. I'd made a bad mistake by slowing it down. Well, then he came back with a quote for three thousand fifty dollars for a custom made grate made by a company up, out, outside of Butler to do this. And talking to Delmar, he can install it. So now we can solve this problem with a grate for three thousand dollars out of line usage money. And that's what we're doing. That's what's change order one. So change order two, back to this, is all the, that they did, made changing this from, from a fifty-three inch pipe to a sixty inch pipe and the lining of that has cost us a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And they did this already. This is already past done. So we can say we don't want to do it, but we can't take it back.
Can we ask them to cover the price at three thousand dollars?
I think if anything, we ought to ask Vitale, WEC to pay that. I think that that was an engineering flaw.
For, what's portion?
For the steel grate. That is a ma- a ma- and that happens to be on.
Is that K?
That, that is the engineering only for that. And this is what I have problem with on K. If we just jump over there for just a second. K is a WEC amendment to the contract. They want to make an amendment to it in the amount of twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. And if you look at what that is, the first two of them happen to be for right of ways and easements. That it really kind of disturbs me that they didn't put right of ways and easements in the original design specifications for phase three. That, for, for the contract.
If the easement work was included, you would be paying an additional sum.
But it was not even included. So this is what this is, is if it was included, we wouldn't be paying it.
It wasn't within their scope of work in the contract.
It was specifically excluded. It says, we will do everything except right of ways and easements.
If it was included, my point is.
You'd still have some fees, engineering.
The engineering cost would be at the beginning more.
Possibly. The bottom line is, is I really suggest that council withhold the, the, the difference between seventeen thousand and twenty-five thousand, eight thousand dollars payment on amendment eight because I really firmly believe that that was a error that WEC made and why should we pay for their errors? Now, you guys can overrule me, but that's my opinion. Do you understand where I'm coming from, but?
I, I do, but there's more to the analysis, I think.
The steel grate, steel grate's gonna require some things though. Let's be very clear about that.
No, it's not. It's. I'm trying to choose my words carefully here. I, I don't want to use terms like design flaws or anything a- along those lines because I don't know that we know that is the case with this grate being there or not being there. And that's what I'll say about it.
Okay, I do know that talking to Vitale, when Judith, I can't remember her last name, was the, not our Judy, but Judith from, from the, from USDA. She used to be, uh, what, what Todd Colley does now. She was the one that looked at the design originally and she's the one that approved it without the, the, the grate. So it's not entirely blamable on, on him. There was at least two engineers that looked at it and neither of them decided to put the grate on there. The point being is I feel personally that if I was a kid, I would be playing in that thing just because I know how I grew up and the things I would have done. And that would have been the da- most dangerous thing in the world to do. The, uh.
Let me ask it a different way. Do we know that there's not a definitive reason as to why a grate was not included in the original scope of, in design?
The only possible thing that they said is it might reduce the amount of flow going into the pipe by a slo- some amount. No hydraulic study was done on that.
I think we need to do a little more investigation to understand if that's legitimate, just to cover all our bases.
I am not going to sleep at night if we don't put a grate on that.
You already approved the grate. You're approving the amendment to further.
What I'm doing is denying the payment of the engineering for that grate. To spend eight thousand dollars in engineering for a grate that costs three thousand dollars seems, counter, does not seem right to me.
I understand.
What happens if we make?
Guys, I, I think it's as simple as, we need to vet this a little further.
Yeah, and what happens, what happens if putting, and I noticed the cart in front of the horse again. What happens if a grate goes on there and it causes more damage than it would have happened and now we're up shit creek?
And it can, it can. Let's talk that through for just a second.
I have some specific legal questions that I need to ask your engineer to make a final determination on this. And that's where it needs to be left tonight.
That's fine. The fact that we're gonna put one on there because we ordered one and all.
I have questions for your engineer to tell you what direction you need to go after hearing this discussion and thinking about it. But I need to make a phone call to Mr. Vitale.
So what's going on J? We skipped over J.
Well, okay, so I, we're gonna, we gotta do, because it's a done deal that's already happened, is we're day late and a dollar short. Eight is the, uh, is the first part of, of the, uh, what I'm, there's four parts to that. The, uh, J and K are the same WEC amendment A. The first two amendments total ten thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and that's for right of way and easement clearances. That's, we gotta do that. Either way you do it, it's gotta be done. So that needs to be approved. The only question is whether we approve, uh, three and four or we, we withhold some fee, fee funds from it and we'll leave that to Joe. We do have several, uh, candidates for, for, that need to be appointed next time. I want to make sure that everybody understands that anybody that's serving on any board or authority stays on that board of authority until they're replaced through an appointment that we make. So that doesn't mean that, that the library's running without anybody between now and then. It just means that the people there are working until they're replaced, if, if they are replaced at all. We had Dennis Vence, Vence come in here, uh, last time and give a little presentation to us about who he was and what he wants to do. We have, uh, everybody knows John Mandarino. He wants to be reappointed to the.
Yeah, I have some issues real fast. And I, I apologize for jumping ahead of you, Mayor, but I've, I've got some people that reach out to me. Like for example, John McGee. He reached out like the beginning of last year for the Blight Property Board and has never heard back from anyone.
Well, that's what we need to continue on. That's the additional candidates for their appointment.
There's several people that have been reaching out and saying, hey, I've sent letters down to the city and I've not been hearing back from anyone. So that's why I say like John McGee's one of them. We'll just, we'll start here with him.
I never saw anything from him.
Yeah, and I remember he's been coming down to meetings. I, I told him to reach out to, he said he did reach out to Mike. And I'm saying that Mike, that he didn't, but yeah, he was one of the guys that sent in a resume and everything.
I have never seen a resume from him, John, but I'll check.
Well, he was appointed to the board beginning of the year, last year.
Okay. Cause he said he hasn't heard from anything from the city.
He wondered if there was gonna be a meeting.
Wait, what's going on? Okay. No, no, no.
That's Bob Stark.
John McGee.
Yeah, John McGee. He's usually sometimes at the meetings. He'll sit in the back, yeah. If he's here at our next meeting, I'll have him come over. But sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to.
No, no, and I got no problem with adding these people, whatsoever. I think we need to fill all the boards and all the authorities as appropriate. Just to be real honest with you, it's really hard to keep up with though.
Yeah, no, I completely understand. Sorry about that. I didn't mean to jump over you.
No, that's fine. I, I totally concur.
What you were saying now, I'm sorry.
Well, I just, all I was saying thus far was John Mandarino and Dennis Vence, Virginia Man- Mani- Money Hands, Joseph Mosick and Don McKenzie want to be back on the library board. They were there before. They want to be reappointed. So I don't know of no reason why we wouldn't do that. The M is the one that's everybody else. And I don't know who everybody else is or what the, the boards are. I would offer that anybody that hears or sees this YouTube or, or Facebook, if they're interested in any of the boards or authorities, please contact us. It was advertised in the paper. Read the paper. Let us know and we will make sure that we do it. We do need to act prudently at the next meeting and this point as many people as we can.
Councilman Nestor, he's appointed until twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
Karen just indicated that his inquiry was when the next Blight at Property Review Board meeting was gonna be held.
All right. And I'll have, okay. I'll have him come up though to introduce himself if he's here at the next meeting.
Talk to him tomorrow, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for the inconvenience.
So that's L and M. Um, just to get through this, the, uh, Portnoy. Portnoy is, is, was, uh, we use Portnoy for collecting garbage bills and we've been doing that for some period of time. Portnoy thus far has collected some three hundred, what was it? Over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars over the last three years?
Ballpark, yeah.
Yeah, ballpark, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Over the last fifteen years or however long they've been doing it for the city, it was one point three million? Something like that. The point being is Joe and I have been talking to them about ways to make their collection even more powerful. And there are some people that I think that we need to just simply make examples of and sell their property for, you know, put them up for ta- for sheriff's sale if they don't pay the garbage bill.
The city's never, the city's never prevented.
Them from doing that. They've always had the right to do that.
And they're moving each property through the.
They're, they're tough. They're tough. They didn't get very much for us in the, the, uh, program that we put together in the last few months to allow people to pay, uh, at the amnesty program. It really didn't get very many people involved with that. There was only a half a dozen. To me, that is just all that much more meaningful that we've got to get tougher with these people and get them to pay. A perfect example is just right across the street. Just gotta get it paid. We talked about this, the concern in the financing of the sewer project. We already did that, so I'm done.
Yeah, I just want to touch on that. It'll be their, the second meeting this month, you will see an ordinance and everything. Part of this is necessary because you do have to extend it. This project was slated to be done, um, in March, the end of March. I mean, the problem is you're dealing with lines that were placed a hundred years ago, so they ran into obvious challenges and it's necessary. The USDA is favorable with extending it. Uh, PNC Bank is favorable to extending it. It's not gonna be extended forever, um, but it'll be enough time for the project to be complete. And you, you have what? About four and a half million dollars left?
Yeah, I don't, we spent ten minutes over the last two years. We continue that rate. We'll be done next year.
For what's the loan is, so that's, that's a good chunk of this project and then you're into the USDA grant. So you're nearing the end of the project a- as opposed to the beginning. So you will see documents to deal with the financing either the last meeting of this month or first meeting of, uh, February.
Okay. Anybody have anything else they want to add to that? It's just paperwork that needs to be done. And it will save us some money too. Okay, Tony, let's wrap, wrap this meeting up. Your turn.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of thirteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars, fifty-seven cents. All invoices are attached to Agenda A.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moja.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the rec account in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and twelve cents. All invoices are attached to the attachment B.
Is there any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moja.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the liquid fuels fund in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and four dollars. All invoices are attached to Agenda C.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moja.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the parks fund in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. All invoices are attached to Agenda D.
Is there any que- second?
Second.
Questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moja.
Yes.
Motion to approve the transfer of seventy-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-two cents from the general fund to the payroll account.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moja.
Yes.
Uh, motion to transfer twenty-one hundred dollars from the general fund to the healthcare fund.
Second.
Any questions? Maybe I should ask some questions just because we're trying to speed this log too fast. Any questions? Maybe I should ask some questions, just because we're trying to speed this log too fast. Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Are we doing the W E C?
Well, my question is, is I have no idea what F is, so I'm not making the motion.
I'll make the motion, and we can talk it through if anybody has...
Requisition twenty-seven.
This is the twenty-seven. It's part of the USDA project. It's Phase Three. It happens to be Phase Three C. It includes M C S P that did the, uh, the, uh, physical coding and W E C for the engineering, cons- project management and inspection. For a total of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Let me make that motion. Motion to approve the payment requisition number twenty-seven certificate in the amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents for the Phase Three work performed during the month of...
Wait a minute. Okay, the requisition's screwed up.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Look at the total in your packet. It's not adding up. It's, it's fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one.
That's only W E C's part.
W E C's part, Joe.
That's... That's the sum of the fourteen thousand, twenty-seven thousand, eight thousand dollars and one hundred and forty percent, eighty-five dollars. That's W E C's payment.
No, there's three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, two M S, M C S P number six on there.
Right.
The total of requisition twenty-seven only adds up to fifty-two thousand dollars. It needs to be three hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
And it is.
On the actual requisition that was prepared to submit to the USDA, the total's incorrect.
Where is that, Joe? Oh.
His total number is wrong.
That's the one prepared by them?
Yes.
Okay.
I will, uh, get a hold, well, Ned's not there anymore. This is a problem.
Somebody's there to...
Well, we'll get it, I'll get it. But nonetheless, we need to approve this motion.
Yes.
Cause the totals are correct on ours, Joe, right?
The totals appear to be correct on the motion.
Right, okay.
So once again, the motion to approve payment requisition number twenty-seven, the certificate amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, twenty-one cents for Phase Three work performed during the months of November and December twenty twenty-four. The amounts requested are for, for W E C for preliminary design number sixteen in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. The final design phase, sixteen, in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. The construction phase in nineteen in the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-six cents. The construction phase invoice number four in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five dollars. The resident project inspector invoice number seventeen in the amount of one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and no cents for an amount of the M S C and, and the amount for M S C in the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-two cents for sewer rehabil- rehabilitation. Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody wanna ask any questions about that?
I just would like to note that the cover letter sent by W E C does contain the correct total for requisition number twenty-seven. The form that needs to be submitted to the USDA needs to be corrected before you submit it.
Actually, this is a form that, that, that goes to Gregory...
Yeah, that's who we submit it to.
Yeah, okay. But he's PNC. We submit it to, this is one that...
Todd Colley gets it first.
Todd, Todd, Todd Colley gets it, and he's the one that sends this form to. Before Todd Colley sends it, he needs to check, fix this.
Okay.
One, one of the two parties need to fix it, right?
Yeah, well, it'll get fixed. I will make sure of that.
Okay. We need a vote on that?
Yeah, oh, call of a, uh, I...
I believe John said...
He's saying, I, there's no, is there any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes. Okay, now's the chance for everybody else to add their items for discussion if you have any. Lois, do you have anything you'd like to add for discussion?
No, I don't.
John, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Um, just a quick question. Uh, I just wanna ask Mike if you were able to get any information of what's going on with, uh, Leeds and the gas pipeline that was being put over there?
It looks like they're gonna be doing the work in the spring on both the sidewalk areas and those yards.
Okay.
So they're gonna wait till the weather clears to do it.
Okay, are they gonna repave that whole road?
Right, and Marvin has, has been out for a couple of days, but he's been working with them to find out the exact parameters of what, what they're gonna do.
Cause I can remember if they have to still go to curb to curb after that, or...
I think they're gonna have to there.
So that road will eventually get paved then?
Yeah.
Okay. And then my second question, or second statement was, I don't know if anybody noticed, but when you're on Scoomaker and you drive on the left-hand lane and you go past Second Street, the road kinda dips down. So I walked up, and the road's cracking down where they had a waterman break not too long ago, and they repaired it, and now it's starting to dip down again. I don't know if anybody noticed when you drive down the left...
Where is this now?
Scoomaker and Second Street. That's the top street. So you drive down a left-hand lane, your car kinda dips down a little bit. I don't know if you can tell now because of the snow, but prior to snowing, so I walked up and the road's kinda pushed down and divvied and cracked.
Is that part of the, uh, the work, the work that we did, or the part of the work that the gas company did?
No, that's when we had the water, there was a water issue not too long ago, maybe a few months ago.
Yeah, but that was sewer work that we did.
So maybe that's, or maybe that might be the sewer work, but it, it's dipping down.
We need to, uh, contact Vitale and get him to see if there's any warranty on that work that he had Morgan do.
Okay, yeah, it's, uh, Scoomaker and Second Street right there, on the left lane, right there in the intersection there. It just dips down. Yes, Chief?
I knew there was a waterman break.
That's right, there was, yeah.
Charley Water was, uh...
Was fixing on that area. That's, that's why I was thinking it was...
Some time in December.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, well, that's much later then. That's different. We can get Charlie Water...
You know what I'm mentioning, Chief, right? Kinda...
It's right here at the, that's where the waterman break was, right here at the intersection.
Yeah.
Left-hand lane, right, you know, right there, so.
So it's prob- it's probably a temporary solution then, cause by December, all the, uh, plants were closed down, and you couldn't do the, uh, the proper repair on the road.
I don't know. It'd be nice to get some type of explanation because it's starting to dip and dip.
Well, I will follow through with that.
That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Karen, do you have anything you'd like to discuss?
Yeah, just very briefly. Back in, on the twelfth, I'd given everybody a list of dates for the cleanup dates for the town, and also the flea market dates. Last year I charged ten dollars a, a vendor, and I just put it out to people. Do you think we should still charge and let them do it for free? But have them register so we know how many people are coming. It doesn't cost us anything to have the flea markets. The idea was to get people in town. So I would just wonder what y'all thought about not having a registration fee, just re- just letting, people still have to let me know they're gonna come. And were these dates okay? I think they were the third Saturday.
I thought the dates were nice, cause they worked out with the rest of the community, too, that was doing other things around that time, so it wasn't no overlap.
The only thing that I would, would, would consider is that people have a good feeling that they get what they pay for. If you don't charge them for anything, they don't feel like they're getting anything. If you, ten dollars is not gonna make or break anybody, but it, it gives somebody the feeling that they're getting something for their money. That's just me, though.
So what happens on the opposite end, and if you charge, but I'm pissed off because I didn't get what I thought I should get out of my ten dollars?
I only made five bucks.
Yeah, come on. Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I've got, everybody's got their own life experiences, but I can go either way on this. I'm not gonna be a pain in anybody's side on this.
You just still make them register though, so you know how many people can have.
Right.
And are they allowed to pick it, is it first come, first served, or how are you doing it?
Well, usually what I did last year, I kept the lists, and then I, I made up a schedule. If you replied first, I put you, I gave everybody, that way, um, that's how I did it. Cause if you let everybody just choose, they're gonna be all over the place. And then we marked spaces for them.
That's probably a good idea.
And I wanted to put it on our website and start making flyers, so everybody will know that we're gonna have them, cause people said, you need to set dates so we can put it on our calendar. And I just wondered, is, are these dates okay, that I can put them? I don't know if you have to vote on it at the end of the month and put them on our website, start making flyers so everybody knows.
It's worth talking about for sure, whether it's a motion or not, I don't know.
I think it's a motion, cause it's public, or it's city property.
Well, part city property, the other part...
Is this across the street?
Redevelopment authority and they...
This is where you had it last year?
Yeah.
When's the first date?
Saturday, April nineteenth.
Okay. It wouldn't hurt to have a motion.
Yeah, let's do it then. Make your motion.
So do I make the motion?
No, this will be at the next meeting.
Okay.
Next meeting, you'll, you'll, we'll put it on your agenda to make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
As long as we're talking about different things, Karen and I also met with a guy by the name of Mark Smith. Mark Smith is a, for lack of better word, a music producer. He, uh, he has an excellent re- uh, reputation within the music industry. He knows all the, the, the bands. He knows how to get things and so forth. And, uh, what we were thinking was that one of the ways to offer something to the community was to have some concerts. And we're thinking primarily at the, uh, at the amphitheater. That may or may not be the proper venue, but that's what we were thinking of the first one. The, um, the thing is, who do you get to do there, and what kind of thing is it gonna be? Nothing is free in this world. Musicians are not free. It costs money to have a magician there. So you've gotta be able to charge admission and make up enough money to pay, pay his fees. We were thinking that the very first one we'd get would be Billy Price. And I don't know if anybody knows who Billy Price is, but he is a, a, um, vintage rock and roller music type guy from, uh, he lives in, in Pittsburgh, of all places. I've seen him at the Lamp Theater as an example. He gives an excellent presentation. He, he, he is a, he, he, he gets the crowd rolling. He really does. I think that, what did they say? He charges?
Twenty-five hundred, and he brings his own sound equipment, which could range from five hundred to a thousand dollars, so, deal.
So the point being is twenty-five hundred dollars is twenty-five hundred dollars. We've got to come up with a way to charge admission to this to get twenty-five hundred dollars. That's a hundred people at twenty-five dollars, or two hundred people at, at twelve dollars. The only thing that, that concerns me is the amphitheater is, first off, is hard seats. But it is accessible, and it's, it's a nice venue. If it's not raining, it'd be an excellent venue. You could set up lawn chairs on the outside of it. But you, you'd have to station somebody at the top road and at the, uh, the bottom road to collect admission, put armbands or something like that on everybody to, to do it. You can't keep people out of the park because the park is public property, but you can restrict it to, to, to that event if, if you're going to. The other thing we talked about is there's numerous other venues within the city that might also be something we could consider. Savic, I forget how he says it. Civic has the Turner Hale Building on the other end of, about Second and Donner. Uh, that was a, his dream to be able to do these kinds of things. He's lost all, best I can tell, he's not done any work to his building in a long time. But that was something that was a possibility. You have the Salvation Army that has the upstairs that may or may not be interested in doing something. You have places like the, uh, the landmark that requires some additional work before you could do something like that. But if we really got behind this as a community and so forth, and this became part of, of the N P P project, a small part of the N P P project, to, to do things, it might be that, that we could get some investment into fixing that landmark back up and doing something big. That probably wouldn't happen before our first day, but it's something we might keep in the back, back of our minds. The other thing that could always be done is, is we could rent space at the, uh, one, at the Fireman's Hall as an example. And you also have the place on Parente that might be something, too. So there are several different places we could go. I still think that if we can do it at the, at the amphitheater, it really keeps it focused on the city of Monessin, although any of them would do it. And I promise you, Billy Price will attract people not only from Monessin, but from all over southwestern Pennsylvania.
I wouldn't be surprised there will be folks maybe out there would be willing to maybe donate to cover the price, to make it a free admission, and so people can bring vendors in, something of that nature, too.
It's, it's possible we could do that, too, but, but Billy Price is...
Because I'd like to see the park utilized. It's been dead up there for quite some time.
Yeah, and this would be a big thing up there. Billy Price has a, quite a following. Uh, he, he's a big name. He would do lots of, he'd bring lots of people from along the way. Just keep everybody in the loop. As this matures, we'll keep everybody informed of what we're trying to do and how it's, how it's maturing, but I don't wanna blindside somebody two months from now and say, hey, by the way, we got a concert going on. And everybody go, what the heck are you talking about? So that's the only purpose of that.
I typed up a summary of our meeting. Do you want me to send it to all of you? Do you wanna see what I wrote down that we talked about?
That's a good idea.
I'll do that.
Not to interrupt, Councilwoman Cosner, don't forget about your policy for the Civic Center.
Well, I need somebody to sit down with me and go over what is, what is appropriate and what isn't. Just an hour's somebody's time going over each one, saying this is, doesn't apply to us, this applies to us.
Legally, everything in there.
Yeah, you said that, but some of those things might not even be for us, and I want somebody else's help.
I don't know how the Civic Center operates, but what you have in your document seems like how a Civic Center should operate.
Okay, well, I can finish it up. I need to know what the fees are, um, stuff like that, and...
We'll suggest them. We'll probably follow along.
And your fee resolution?
It could be.
I mean, it's all ready to go, just a few things.
Which we did change some of the fees, right? Didn't we change fees for like, for like the amphitheater and all that? Did we change all that yet?
No.
We should probably need to do that soon as possible because it's...
It's gonna be the season before we know.
The season's gonna be right before we do it.
Summer's right around the corner.
So, that, we need to maybe get on the ball on that, too, start changing, you know, coming up with plans of what we're gonna charge everyone. Because no one's using that amphitheater up there. It's too expensive. It's just...
It's beautiful.
Well, we're free for anybody that's nonprofit.
Yeah.
It always has been. It still doesn't get used. And it's been used for, for a few things. There's been a couple of things up there.
But I mean...
Yeah, I need to do it much more.
I think it's easier to promote if it was a little cheaper.
Yeah. There are some things up there that, um, can be, it's first off, a beautiful place to do things. We have internet in the, uh, the, the shed up there that the city uses. I had one time had cameras around the place that would've brought internet to everywhere, and it still may be functional. There may be still internet available at the Civic Center, at the amphitheater. So, all I'm saying is, if you can offer things like YouTube and so forth for, for people that are doing things, sometimes that entices people to wanna come up there and do present, you know, performances.
Yeah, I don't agree. I don't, I don't disagree, sorry.
Anyway, that's what Karen and I have been doing. I was quite impressed by this guy. Uh, I think he offers a lot of, a lot of possibilities. He's got a lot of contacts. Billy Price was just one of, one of the many that he talked about and one that was reasonably priced, and we thought that'd be the first one to, to open up the show with.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
I think it'd be a lot of fun. Anybody have anything else?
No, Mayor.
Make a motion that we adjourn at, uh, eight-twenty. Is there a second?
Second.
Any, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.